Welcome one, welcome all to our informal session. Welcome all the nice folks in the gallery. Okay, Mr. Duhany, we're ready to move.
All right, so Mr. Mayor, members of council, at the request of several members of city council, we're going to invite Kate Pittman with the Vibe Creative District to come and give city council a 10-year update to celebrate their anniversary.
And if you don't mind me saying, that was a lovely photo on the cover of Virginia Pilot and a wonderful story.
Yes, thank you so much.
Yeah.
All right, well, it's wonderful to see so many friendly faces in the room. Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council Members. Thank you to City Manager Patrick Duhany for allowing me the opportunity to come present today in honor of our 10-year celebration of the Vibe Creative District. Before I begin, I would like to ask that all of our Vibe Board members and friends of the Creative District please stand to be recognized. Thank you all. All right. Well, in April of 2015, Virginia Beach City Council adopted the ordinance to establish the first creative district in Virginia Beach. At the time, local citizens worked with the Department of Cultural Affairs, city attorneys, and in partnership with then-city manager Jim Spoor and Mayor Will Sessoms to develop the concept with three primary goals, as you see here. For years, this neighborhood was riddled with violence and crime, empty lots, and vacant storefronts. It was arguably one of the biggest eyesores and most depressed areas of the resort. These goals seen here, to spawn economic development, attract residents, businesses, and visitors, and to create a unique place for local artists and creative businesses, have been the launching point for the Vibe Creative District. After the support of then-council members, Dr. Ross Hammond, Ben Davenport, and John Earn, who listed Vibe as a top 10 priority at their council retreat, Ordinance 3402 Chapter 9 Creative Districts was approved by that sitting council 10 to 1 on April 21, 2015. This established incentives for adaptive reuse, for private property owners, small business initiatives via rebates for creative businesses moving into those empty storefronts, and as a creative district, a broad list of industries, including museums, theaters, advertising, design, culinary arts, and markets, were defined as the ideal businesses to attract. As a new initiative, we had to first define where the Vibe District was, both for the public and for the businesses interested in moving there. Along with the ordinance came a map to illustrate the vibe, pictured here in that little red area within the central area of the resort. It was established that property and business owners would need to follow the oceanfront form-based code for any private development in the vibe, which falls within the resort boundaries seen here in purple. Here is our map back from 2015 and what I call a funky footprint. And this was specifically designed to carve out as much residential private property as possible and also to leave out the city-owned properties around the area. So this is all of the private commercial property in a continuous area roughly about 15 blocks. Of course, we couldn't leave out Mocha over there as our local museum partner. From that blank canvas, established in 2015, to a heavily concentrated, critical mass today, our organization has worked diligently to populate the district with hundreds of works of art and dozens of creative businesses, two public park areas, and many other creative placemaking initiatives. At your seats, each of you have this fold-out map. Not only do we work to share these maps locally with our partners in the city, we also pay for statewide distribution via all of the Visit Virginia Welcome Centers and also at local attractions. These printed maps are printed every other year at a volume of 100,000 to 150,000 at each printing, and the same map is duplicated in the local VB Kids Guide as an in-kind donation to the Vibe nonprofit. Additionally, we complement the printed maps with a downloadable digital version on our website and a global digital option via Google Maps. The Vibe is a named destination where we can add all of the public works of art, murals, and more, providing detailed artist information and links to videos, websites, and graphics. This mural map has drawn us international attention and now has over 700,000 views. So on the left here, you can see kind of the global view of the Vibe District. This year, we have highlighted the 10 new murals with the black line. And then when you click on these little markers, it will pull up the detailed information that you see on the right. This is the Visitor Center and our partnership with the Tony Mural there. All right, but what is it a name and how does it work? As I have toured thousands of people through the Arts District, I explain that Vibe stands for Virginia Beach. Our destination is an authentic reflection of our local creative community. First, it is a destination designated by our city council. And second, it is the name of our nonprofit that works in partnership with the city to activate the area. I would be remiss not to mention that this catchy name was created by Charles Powell, the founding member of our Friends of the Creative District Business Association. The Vibe nonprofit was founded by the visionary leaders who we have here today, Andrew Fine and Laura Wood, and their list of credentials could run pages long. However, I have highlighted here the recognition that they have most recently received while working with Vibe. The third component is me, the singular paid staff member, who runs the nonprofit as a pass-through organization dedicated to hiring artists, not staff, and to spending all of our resources on public art and placemaking events. The nonprofit has not operated a building or an office in the last 10 years as our efforts have been spent building the community all around us. Oh, pardon me, I did want to call out our 2022 Virginia Business feature where we also had the cover of that magazine as well. The Vibe nonprofit was also established in 2015, and we have raised $2.3 million in the last 10 years to support this effort. The mission and visions of the nonprofit closely mirror the language of our ordinance. And the nonprofit runs two boards, a nonprofit board of about 30 community leaders, many of them here today, and the Friends of the Creative District Business Association, which has a separate board of 25 individuals. While there's only one paid staff member, you have 55 capable professionals dedicated to the mission and the work of our nonprofit, and they have donated thousands of hours in the last decade. In addition to the nonprofit board and business association, the Vibe nonprofit has contracted hundreds of local creatives to create public art, photograph, video, create creative place-in-making programming and events, host creative speaking engagements, be our tour guides, our muralists, our musicians, and more. The nonprofit has paid out over $600,000 to artists in the last decade. And here's a collage of some of our local creatives. The Vibe nonprofit database has over 1,000 entries of artwork that have been submitted over the last decade. Of those, we have 613 individual artists coming from 20 countries, 34 states, and 33 unique cities in Virginia. While I will not read them all in detail, I wanted to include in your packet a list of the detailed goals of the Vibe nonprofit. Also in your packet is our most recent strategic plan draft, and these documents illustrate the detailed commitment of our organization to the Vibe Creative District. Public support of the Vibe District has been tremendous. It has not wavered in 10 years. Support from the City of Virginia Beach via the Arts and Humanities Commission and the TIP Fund has ranged over the years from 50,000 to 210,000 annually. And the Vibe nonprofit has matched those dollars with privately earned dollars from individuals, businesses, and local foundations. That matching support comes from 11 different foundations and grant organizations, over 200 corporate business and individual donations, and 175 business members. This slide includes some of our most recent donors who have contributed over $5,000 annually. But we do not work in isolation, and our reach extends beyond our 15-block home. The Vibe nonprofit works with an average of 25 community programming partners each year to provide year-round entertainment, community-building activities, and educational opportunities both in the vibe and throughout the city on projects such as the Better Together Title I Mural Program, which can be found in 18 of our local schools. Since its inception in 2015, the Vibe District has drawn interest from media outlets locally, regionally, nationally, and internationally, resulting in more than 1,000 positive press stories, all on the community here in Virginia Beach. Vibe even made a primetime TV appearance in 2018, as you can see here on the right, and an episode of Jeopardy! where Becky correctly identified the clue, "What is Virginia Beach?" for $1,600. And as you mentioned, we are also very grateful for the cover of the Virginia Pilot this past Sunday. Our nonprofit has worked closely with the City of Virginia Beach CBB staff over the last 10 years to promote arts around the city. We tour travel writers, tour operators, and attend special conferences in partnership with them. Last year, Vibe co-founder Laura Wood was honored with a 2024 National Travel and Tourism Award, and Vibe traveled all the way to Montreal in 2024 with the CBB staff to celebrate Virginia Beach's arts and culture scene. The CBB staff also did a tremendous job highlighting local creatives in their social media campaign, Virginia Beach Artisans, and also their campaign, Virginia Beach, It's a Vibe. The Vibe nonprofit has also drawn interest from our professional peers as we have been invited to present regionally at the Virginia Commission for the Arts, nationally at the American Society of Landscape Architects Conference with Emily Archer here today, and then also remotely in Brazil at the International Conference of Creative Territories for Sustainable Development. Many local presentations for civic leagues, professional organizations, alumni associations, and more all take place at the demand of the public. And our regional neighbors are noticing the impact as well. In the last five years, we have toured representatives from Newport News, Portsmouth, Norfolk, Suffolk, and Williamsburg. Just yesterday, in Inside Business, an article credited Vibe as being the inspiration for Williamsburg's The Edge District. Our friends over at Newport News began talks with the vibe about our programming before they contracted the Contemporary Arts Network to create the Newport News Street Museum. Support Portsmouth Public Art Nonprofit also started the Wall Street Mural Festival last year, modeling the 10 Murals in 10 Days format that we created. And then members in Suffolk are currently exploring murals in 2025. All right. The goal to revitalize the Central Beach area meant paying particularly close attention to the economic impact. Working with the Commissioner of the Revenue, the nonprofit has been able to benchmark the 2015 gross sales and annual taxes generated in the district. And these figures have grown significantly over time. In 2024, the City of Virginia Beach recognized over $900,000 in increased annual taxes compared to the 2015 baseline. The number, I'm sorry, gross sales within the district have increased 33.9 million in the last 10 years. The number of businesses operating within the district has doubled, over 203 new business licenses in 10 years. While we understand that inflation and other external factors can impact these numbers, there is without a doubt a positive economic impact from the Vibe District's efforts over the last decade. All right. Working with the Virginia Beach Real Estate Assessor's Office, we have documented an increase in real estate values in the district of $56 million. These figures grow over the last 10 years from the baseline number, around 135 million in 2015, to 192 million in 2024. That's an increase of 41%. It is often seen in proximity to the Vibe District that there are real estate listings advertising being near or in the Vibe District. And frequently, over the last several years, people tell us that they move close to the vibe or into the resort to be near the Vibe District. All right, working with the Department of Economic Development, the Vibe nonprofit first started the concept of a small business matching grant with the city back in 2017, where we asked for $75,000 that had been earmarked for our nonprofit to be transferred over to the Economic Development Office for a grant pilot program. Over two years, 12 businesses were awarded grants totaling $75,000. And in return, the City of Virginia Beach saw investment from the private sector close to $375,000. Based on the success of that program, Economic Development took over the Small Business Matching Grant Program, renamed it the Facade Improvement Grant Program, increased the funding, and opened it citywide. We are so thankful for them to do that. Just this morning, two of our businesses in the Vibe District received grants. And so we're so proud that the City of Virginia Beach is still seeing a significant return on investment. But beyond the numbers, you can just quite simply see the changes all around the Vibe District. Today, we have some before and afters. This is on 19th Street between Mediterranean and Cypress, right behind WRV, what has become the alley, a very hotspot in the Vibe District. And you can see the before image, after image, and then the activation for the VB Lee Night Market. Over at 17th Street, Virginia Beach Boulevard and Baltic, you can see the before images of where Esoteric and Commune and Fathom Coffee now live. Additionally, on Virginia Beach Boulevard, you can see the before and after of the Superior Pond property. This business had over a third of its building vacant when we started the Vibe District, and they were able to renovate and allow two to three new businesses to move in under the same roof. Also, on 19th Street and Mediterranean, you can see how Java Surf has completely transformed that corner with all local art. While private businesses were transforming the private properties around the vibe, the City of Virginia Beach has invested significantly in the connectivity plan, addressing the outdated infrastructure on 19th Street, 18th Street, and the soon-to-be-under-construction 17th Street. These critical public infrastructure changes have provided the necessary connectivity with widened sidewalks, bike racks, on-street parking, modern utilities, and stormwater improvements all throughout Central Beach. It's notable to mention that the 19th Street CIP project has won several awards, including a National Hardscaping Award for the Artistic Paver Intersections. The almost-complete 18th Street CIP project has been a collaborative effort to grow and expand the events in the district with features like stage electric and a canopy, soft curbs for mobile trucks, electric and water hookups, and a flexibility for closing streets for large-scale events such as our weekend markets. You can see the Old Beach Farmers Market on 18th Street and the Old Beach Art and Eco Market on Cypress and in Vibe Park. The CIP changes allowed the Old Beach Farmers Market to expand out of a private parking lot and grow substantially onto 18th Street. This has increased the access for the public but also increased the opportunity for local vending businesses. And the once-neglected areas along 18th Street, which included stormwater ditches and significant overgrowth, now feature walking paths and public art. A dormant grass lot, which I believe was condemned property at 18th Street and Cypress, has been transitioned into Vibe Park and welcomes thousands of visitors each month for performing acts and events. All right, as we approach the 10-year anniversary of Vibe this April, we wanted to first and foremost come here and thank you for this incredible partnership which undoubtedly has improved the aesthetics, the value, and the culture of the Central Beach area. Next month, we will begin a year-long human interest campaign featuring a unique story every month showcasing the social impact of the Vibe District. A call to the public for story submissions will be shared. Working with city staff, we are proposing updates to the Vibe ordinance as a means of healthy housekeeping and also to look at growth opportunities like a new mobile pilot program for mobile businesses. This spring, city council will have the opportunity to adopt a resolution for a brand-new Good Vibes Celebration Paver Walkway on 18th Street, where the public will be welcomed to participate in an engraved paver program to help crowdfund an endowment campaign for the vibe and sustain us into the future. And we hope that you will mark your calendars for the first Friday, October 3, where we will have a special anniversary block party and hopefully a ribbon cutting for the 18th Street CIP project, where we hope to unveil the final street artworks in the crosswalks. And finally, we are working on a publication of a full-color mural retrospective later this year. All right, thank you again for this opportunity to speak. And I welcome any comments or questions.
Before I get to Rosemary, let me just say that Andrew Fine, Laura Wood, and Kate Pittman are visionaries, game changers. And I take a look at the quality of folks that are in the gallery. There's no question why this is a success of epic proportions. When you consider the transformation of that entire area with the sports center, then I understand right across from that a really upscale restaurant's about ready to open. And then you come down to the Vibe District, and you come down to Atlantic Park, and then you come down to Rudy Loop. Boy, what a destination. I just want to say, the vibe is definitely a point of pride in our city. Rosemary?
Thank you.
Well, you said "thank you" to us. We need to say "thank you" to all of you. Absolutely, I mean, I was around when Andrew and Laura came and said, "This is what we want to do." And we just need, and you know what? They just need a little help, not a lot of help. It's unbelievable what you've been able to do and create with a little help from us. And it's because of your vision and the hard work with your two boards and the leadership that you've had with Andrew and Laura and yourself and everybody involved. So it's just really exciting. I had the expression in the vibe, "If it doesn't move, it gets painted."
Just about.
I'll keep moving.
Make sure you keep moving because you're going to get painted. Because, and it's just so beautiful and so exciting because, you know, as you know, I live there. I travel through there every day. My district is right on the fringe. I have a tiny little bit of the vibe. Most of it's in Mr. Remick's district. But it's really exciting what you all have done with really a small amount of money to grow it to what it is now and the value that it is to the city and the inspiration that you have created worldwide with what you've done. So you are, we need to thank you for what y'all have done.
Thank you so much.
That's great. Amelia?
Well, this is an exciting day. Because as you mentioned, May, Ben, I forgot who was the guy.
John Earn.
John Earn got behind this at that Bronx Center, saying, "We're going to make this happen." This is exciting. We have friends with Laura, Fine, Andrew, and yourself. We made that happen, and we have not regretted it. It's been a wonderful partnership. As you know, right now, I didn't stand up with the group because I was on the board floor, and then gradually we all broke up. But one thing about Kate, she's a walk-on person like myself. We'd go around looking at different places. She would get in that buggy. I cannot even drive it. But that's how the energy she has for what she does around the area. And designing the racks, remember? Going through, getting everyone to be involved. This is a success story. And I love being a partner with you. The ACC loves being a partner with you. And whatever we can do to keep this going, let's do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Cash, and then Josh, and then work.
So as you know, I'm very excited for what you're doing. And it's just very nice and refreshing that you've received national attention from Jeopardy! And that's big, right? Maybe we should go on Jeopardy!, right? But with that being said, I mean, Virginia Beach is about the vibe, right? So catch the vibe, come see the vibe. With that being said, I love your increase in numbers, business licenses. All right, so not only are you building relationships, but you're building businesses to keep our economic engine flowing like it should on the oceanfront as well as Virginia Beach as a whole. So thank you for what you're doing, and we look forward to seeing more. Thank you.
And Josh, and work.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kate, like the Vice Mayor said, congratulations and thank you. Because, you know, when you're a visitor looking to find a place where, you know, in a locality you visit, I mean, you really, you're looking for something authentic and unique, and that's what you provide. I mean, it is allowing residents to make their unique expressions in the form of art, not just art, but also cuisine and entrepreneurship. And you have just, you've created something magical. And it really is a testament to the power of investing in arts and culture initiatives and placemaking initiatives. And, you know, and that's another reason why I'm so glad that we, as a council, you know, saw the wisdom to create that $1.6 million, 20% of the amusement tax revenue stream to fund neighborhood and community arts programs and grants to individual and aspiring artists. And so I think just, you know, looking at the thousands of earned media impressions that you've gotten locally and globally to the partnerships you have with professional organizations and our students at our schools. And I've enjoyed walking with my daughters on the sketch crawls. And, you know, it's just, there's something for everybody, and it's just you've created something beautiful for everybody to enjoy.
Thank you.
Okay, work.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer, and of course, I'm going to pile on as well. Congratulations, and thank you, Kate, but also Mr. Fine, Andy Fine, and Laura Wood, and also the Vibe Boards, plural, thank you, and the prior city council for recognizing this potential. So as we think about a thriving, successful, fun city, this is where, to me, in addition to public safety and public schools, but creating this area and a city helps our existing citizens enjoy what the Vibe offers, but also for tourists. It's right next to the resort. So I think one helps the other over time. And in 10 years, you've come a long way. And I also challenge you to look forward to the next 10 years because it's been a great arrival. Let's keep going.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? What's, Amelia?
Can we ask all those people back there, the artists, the creators, to stand again? We hope our camera can pick them up so the city can see who you are. Please stand.
Yeah. Come on, don't be shy. Come on, friends. Board members, please stand. We have several of our city staff leaders on here as well.
So the camera can pick you all up because you've done an incredible job.
Thank you so much.
When you think about the accolades that the City of Virginia Beach gets as being one of the most livable cities in this great country, it's the vibe and the people. It's the people that live here, work here, come together and donate their time and talent, you know, and to really make us the community that we are. So thank you, and God bless you, and keep it going. Kate, Mr. Duhany?
So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, the next presentation will provide economic impact analysis and also... impact analysis and also a general review of the operations of the Convention Center. City Council requested this back in December 2023, when a proposal was provided to consider alternative models for managing the Convention Center. The next voice you'll hear will be Nancy Hellman, followed by Adam Sachs with Tourism Economics to provide council overview of the presentation.
Welcome.
Hi, good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, Mr. Duhany, Mr. Stiles. We're here today to present the economic impact and the operating income analysis of the Virginia Beach Convention Center. Here with us today is Adam Sachs, President of Tourism Economics and Oxford Economics Company, he's, which is dedicated to analytically basing consulting in the tourism sector. For more than 25 years, Adam has worked with destinations, industry associations, and companies around the world in the areas of policy analysis, market assessments, and economic impact. Adam's work has provided the foundation for billions of dollars worth of capital investment, important decisions made by hotel companies, developers, and investors. He also manages the ongoing production of travel forecasting that has consistently guided the travel sector in the United States through uncertain times. He is an authority on measuring the economic impact of visitor activity, and his work regularly informs national and local government policy. Adam may look familiar to some of you as he presented our last two State of Tourism Industry events. Adam is also a member of the U.S. Department of Commerce, Commerce, Travel and Tourism Authority Board, and now I'll turn the mic over to him. Thank you, Adam, for being here.
Hey, and welcome.
Thank you. It's great to be with you. I think the Vibe people have already left, but may I say that that's awesome. We work with about 300 destinations around, just around the U.S. and Canada, and so many of them are doing everything they can to try to be creative about this concept of placemaking. How do they make themselves distinct, where you have a sense that you are in a particular place? And, and a lot of them are looking to, you know, what, what has Austin done? What has Nashville done in the arts? And really, it harkens back 30 years to Richard Florida's creative economy concept, and that places that develop the creative aspect of their economy tend to be catalysts of other parts of the economy. And what you've done in terms of an organic development of that is pretty extraordinary. You, you'll find yourselves, I'm sure, to be a case study increasingly that other destinations follow. So, so I just congratulate you, that, you know, there's no extra charge for that, just my, my honest.
Do they pay you for the case study? Because that can help us.
No, no, that's just gonna happen. People are, you know, people who do placemaking are gonna look to you as a forerunner in how to do this. That's not why I'm here. I'm here to talk to you about the Convention Center, and particularly, gonna start with, with sharing with you the economic value of the center in 2023 as a benchmark. And this is an important topic of conversation because, you know, I'm pushing 30 years in this industry, and, and it seems to be every few years it comes up, like, why are destinations investing in these convention centers? You know, they're, they're lost leaders, but they're not leading anything, right? They've been called boondoggles. There's a lot of, there's a particular professor who every few years shows up in the New York Times lambasting the idea of convention centers. And, and what I'm here to do, in one sense, is just speak some sense into that narrative because the economic value of your convention center well warrants the investment, and, and we'll, we'll get into that in a bit of detail. Just to, to set the, the table for how we analyze this, we look at first the direct business sales, that is, all of the, the business activity that is generated by the convention center. There, we actually limit it only to what's spent off-site. So all of the onsite expenditures, some of that is publicly funded, we just take that off the table. You could make a case that that is economic activity, and, and you'd be right, but we wanted to be just purist in the say, let's say, what is the center generating in terms of economic activity across Virginia Beach? And that's all of the off spend, offsite spending of meeting participants. Then we look at the indirect sales. So what, all of the, the purchases of those businesses that are receiving spending that are local, and so the supply chain that is local, and then the induced is the effects of incomes that are spent in the local economy. So incomes earned as a result of the convention center that then gets spent. So what you, you get when you look at these three pieces is the total economic value of the convention center. That is, if you took the convention center away, what would be lost? To give you a sense of the scope of just 2023, the center hosted 275 events, and that included nearly half a million participants in the year. If you look at the breakout and see a significant number of that 456,000 participants in consumer shows and in sports and tournaments, with lesser amounts in conventions, corporate, and in trade shows. And I want to point out that those cumulatively, the trade show and convention, that's about 12% of the market. I mean, we can come back to, to why that, that is. Other, you know, all sorts of social events and the like that are hosted in the center. Where are the visitors coming from? Where are the attendees coming from? Well, half of them are spending the night, 52%. And so right away, you can begin to see how that's generating everything from hotel tax to spending in restaurants and transportation, recreation, and entertainment, because they're, they're there for multiple days. 34% are locals, about a third, and then 14%, we just call those day visitors from out of town. So this is, this is the, kind of the drum roll moment on the economic values. So $76 million was spent by attendees to events at the convention center in the local economy in 2023. It's not just in one place, of course, 27 million in lodging, 24 million in restaurants, about 10 million in shopping, 9 million local transportation, including parking, public transportation, ride share, and gas, and then another 6 billion in recreation. So it's well distributed across various types of businesses in Virginia Beach. That 76 million ripples through the economy, and this is where we look at the indirect and the induced impacts as well. So the supply chain and the income effects give us a total of $110.8 million in new economic activity, of which the convention center is a catalyst. That supported 814 jobs and generated $9.8 million in state and local taxes. Importantly, of that 9.8, 5.1 million was local taxes, and 2.5 was hotel taxes within that 5.1. And those numbers are important for where we're going, and we'll, we'll come back to them. But this gives you a sense that when you start asking, if you ever ask or asked, what is the convention center worth? Is it worth it? These are the numbers that, out of the gate, answer that question, and I think definitively answer it yes. That is important backdrop for looking at the second phase of our analysis, which is looking at the income of the center relative to its expenses. And what we were asked to do is to benchmark the Virginia Beach Convention Center against 11 other centers. So we've got a composite of 12 different convention centers, we'll look at those in a minute. And what we want to look at very specifically is what was the operating revenue of each of those centers? How did it break out between different types of revenue? And what percentage of those operating expenses was paid for by revenue? All right? So we compiled competitive information across all of these centers, looking at their financial arrangements, operating models, ownership models, across these 11, and including Virginia Beach, 12 convention centers. Baltimore, Chattanooga, Richmond, Kentucky, Myrtle Beach, Ocean Center, Raleigh, Ocean City, Savannah, Tampa, and Washington, D.C. Operating revenue organized in these seven categories: space rental, F&amp;Bs, advertising, sponsorship, equipment, electrical, parking, marshaling, and then, and then retail, space, and leasing. Okay? So this, this is the densest thing that I'm, that I'm gonna share with you, but it is one of the more important pieces of information as well. The coverage ratio is how much of expenses is covered by revenue. And so on the bottom, you'll see that in Ocean City, revenue is only covering about 36% of their expenses. On top, Tampa is, is running a modest profit on their convention center. And you can see Virginia Beach somewhere in the, in the middle of the pack at 63 cents on the dollar covered by revenue. There's a lot of important details. I'll, I'll try to call out some of them as you take this data in. One of them is, you can see venues managed, and you'll, of course, you'll see Washington, the convention center, 11 different venues. We focus just on the business meeting space in that, that case. So it's the, the convention center, and then one other meeting space. The same with Raleigh, we just focused on their business meeting space. We tried to make it as like-for-like as we went through each center. Right? Other thing to mention is that Tampa's earning a profit. They also have a very successful food and beverage outlet that's running sort of parallel, but is all, but is also on premises. So that does help in their financial analysis. So what else can, can we glean from this? You see, Virginia Beach is below the average of the other 11. And one of the reasons for that is likely that the Virginia Beach Convention Center is not collecting parking revenue. And, and the majority of the other centers, some of them it's difficult to know, but, but more than half are collecting parking revenue, and that's a significant opportunity. Some are also collecting, as I mentioned, they've got successful food and beverage outlets that are part of the facility. The other thing I want to point out that I think connects this with what we talked about initially, is what would, what would a holistic look at the operating coverage ratio be if we looked at the local taxes generated by the center? And I mentioned 5.1 million dollars in local taxes generated by the center. If you add that to this calculation, to the revenue, you would be well over one, well over one. And in fact, just the hotel taxes gets you over one. Okay? And, and I believe you're close, you're actually close to $2 for, for every dollar of cost if you include all local taxes generated by the center. All right? So, so combining these two pieces, you, you do see that, you know, this is, it's actually not a lost leader. If you look at it holistically at the taxes that are generated, if you look just at the P and L, sure, you're looking at a coverage ratio of 63 cents on the dollar, but that's, that's not the, the full, and I think the, the proper way to look at it. Other thing to point out on this is that I'm sure that your eyes have, have gone to the far-right column, which centers have a headquarter hotel? And there are only two that do not, and that is Virginia Beach and then Ocean City, which of course is in, in last place. And I think it is, from our point of view, a, a, a simple fact that not having a convention center hotel does limit your opportunity. And as I mentioned at the beginning, where, what 12% of your attendance is for conventions and trade shows, that's probably where, where you're, you're losing the most opportunity because those events, those organizers tend to be much more, much more demanding when it comes to having an onsite convention center hotel. So you continue to do well in sports and consumer shows, but that's where you have been limited. So to, to wrap this up, I mean, you do have revenue opportunities, and I think that parking and potential restaurant, retail opportunities, if developing those could increase the financial margins on the center. But overall, overall, not only is the center, if you look at the taxes generated, a, an economic catalyst, a, on, it is a, it's a plus generator to local taxes, it's also, it's a facility that offers a lot to the community, right? It is the, it is the host of many local events that you wouldn't have a place for them otherwise. It's also a way that prospective visitors get introduced to your destination and then, and then come back at a later time. We see that regularly. Virginia Beach has a lot going for it, right? You have, you have air access, you're, you're near large visitor markets, you have a fantastic leisure destination with, you know, desirable amenities and experiences. And, and, and so you can build on this. You do have opportunity, and I'm not, I'm not here to prescribe what that is, but to give you a sense that that opportunity is there. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, any questions? Josh?
So, Councilmember Belucci's not here, but I was gonna stand like Michael, I've gotta, I wanna say a couple of things, and then I got a couple of questions. It's his, that's his byline, and I love it. I'm the co-chair of the Fire and Rescue Conference, and we routinely, we're the, I think, the longest use of the, before the convention center, when it was the pavilion, we've been coming there over 25 years. And so we just had our conference. Unfortunately, we had to pull the plug because of the snow, but I did get the opportunity to ask the vendors, and some of them, most of them, about the host hotel part, and this small case study, but they, to a person, they all said they would use a host hotel. They would much rather have their people right there attached to the building to be able to set up the stands, do those things, the large apparatus. The apparatus fleet is a large group of people in each one. Now, I understand this is just one small conference in February, and doesn't necessarily mean you should build a host hotel, but I am saying this was a group that, that did, did state that they would like to have that. And as I've been a Metro Fire Chief, I've been across the country, and I know that the host hotel always sold out first for every, for every conference. I know we're a little different with, with our oceanfront hoteliers, and I certainly do not want to take away from them. I don't think we would with our size, at least of ours, and I don't think overall we would, but that's, that still needs to be decided. I'm not trying to get into that. My, my question for you, and I think you already sort of answered it, because it's easy to say that we're .63 and not, and not count the food that sold, the restaurants, like, like again with our conference, I mean, you have over 1,000 firefighters eating. That's a large bill every night. And then, you know, they're, they're out having a good time and everything else. So by the time you add in, I think it's 2,000 room nights, and again, I'm only talking about us, but that's 2,000 room nights that we're bringing, plus all the food and everything else. And that's one of the reasons we had to pull the plug because we weren't 100% sure with 10 to 12 inches of snow, were we gonna be able to get the restaurants? The manager and I talked, well, we're talking the whole time, is like, can we, you know, can the employees get to the, to the restaurants to feed this group that we were worried about? So I just think that is a part of that number, that to say it's .63 is, like you said, is not, not the whole picture. Is there anything else there, though, that we're missing that could be added to that, to that number that would help, help one way or the other with it? And it's all right if it isn't, I just don't want to, I just would like to know if there was any more.
Yeah, I mean, I think for the sake of comparability, what we've done is really just look at the P and Ls of these.
Which is good.
Want it to be fair.
Yeah.
But at the same time, you know, there, there's a reason why the majority of convention centers are happily being run at a loss.
Yeah. Yeah, as I'm saying, we, it's how, it's how you interpret or look at it. That's not a loss in my book. It's just not. So, I mean, we would love for that number to be higher. I don't know that we're gonna go to charge them for parking down at Oceanfront. I don't think that's in the cards, but, you know, but it would help that number.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, Josh, and then Stacy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, Mr. Sachs, thanks for the presentation. I also enjoyed the presentation you gave at the State of Tourism as well. Nicely done. I've got a couple of questions. Of that 9.8 million state and local taxes, would you say it was about 5, 5 million in local?
Yeah, 5.1 of the state and local is, is local.
And then you'd mentioned that in the breakdown of, I guess, what is this? The breakdown of types of events, you had mentioned that 12% roughly for trade, trade shows and conventions, is that right? In our peer markets, where, where was that? Did we look at the, I guess, the breakdown of events in our peer markets to know whether or not that 12% is low or middle of the road or, or what?
It is low. We didn't, we didn't pull that, that data. It's not all publicly available. You need access to the CRM.
You need access to the CRM information, which isn't always publicized. But we have enough, enough experience, we'd say, yeah, that is certainly on the low side.
What would you say, I mean, without trying to pick me down on a number, but like what's something to shoot for? What is a, what is a reasonable percentage in that, in that way?
You could double it. Yeah, you could easily, I mean, a quarter. I mean, to some extent, you're gonna, you're gonna skew toward leisure sorts of events, right? Your sports events and, um, and consumer shows because you're a leisure destination, right? But, but you also have opportunities. I mean, you know, giving it an outrageous example. But, but Orlando does massive trade show business, right? But they're a leisure destination. And they're able to actually leverage the one to develop the other because people want to go to Orlando, people want to go to Virginia Beach. And, and so when meeting organizers are choosing a destination, in addition to price and capacity and, and amenities and logistics, they're looking at, is this a place where my attendees are gonna want to come? And, and you have that, I would say, as a competitive advantage.
And so, and maybe this is more of a Nancy question, but, um, the utilization rate, where are we? Are we, do we have room to grow in our convention center? Are we busy? If we, if we get busier, does that mean we're gonna hire more people? Probably, but hopefully we're taking in more revenue as a result.
Yeah, so I could certainly give you the utilization rate in an upcoming Friday package, but I would definitely say there is room to grow. There's seasonal times where we're incredibly busy. This time of year, we're incredibly busy in the convention center. But there are pockets of time where we certainly could grow.
Yeah, thank you. And then Councilmember Hutch made an awesome point. I'm just gonna make it again. That, that coverage ratio speaks nothing to the, um, local taxes that are generated. And, um, and while it may look like a loss leader on this chart, it's doubling is what you're saying, our investment in it every year. And then lastly, you know, for, what is it, 20 years old the conventions are?
Yeah, they're rough.
It's a beautiful building still. It really is. And it's, it's, uh, wonderful to be inside. It's wonderful to look at, got wonderful sightlines. So, um, you know, we, we, we gotta make sure we're taking care of it and reinvesting in it. And that's all I'll say. So, uh, thank you very much.
Stacy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are you familiar with the McCormick Center in Chicago? And is that a successful convention center?
It, it absolutely is in the sense that it's, it's driving, it's driving economic value well, although it's cost. I don't know what its coverage ratio is off the top of my head.
Where's the closest hotel to the McCormick Center?
They have, I mean, they've, they've got, don't, I mean, they've got all walking distance in the convention center.
You have to be a very healthy walker and you'd have to not mind the cold to walk to the McCormick Center. So I'm just not convinced that having a convention center hotel is gonna bring us to where we need to be. Who are the largest event sponsors?
We're the largest events inside of the building?
Yes.
Wow, we have lots of, um, large conventions and I can certainly send you a list of all of them with the, the sort of the attendance in your Friday packet. So we have several large conventions that take up citywide business. Our sporting events inside of the building, or in, in case you were wondering when you saw that chart where it said sporting events, those are totally different than the ones going on inside of the sports center. Inside of the convention center, we have like cheer and dance events and those types of things that require more theatrics, things hanging from the ceiling, that sort of thing. So they're large users of the building. We have consumer events that take up a lot of space and are really popular in the building, home shows, car shows, things like that. We have lots of banquet events that take up all three banquet halls and max out that type of space. So it's really a mixed bag.
What are most of these large events? Are they more local events, regional events, or national events?
I would say that the, from, from the perspective of our, our conventions, our conventions are mostly regional conventions. I would say that's our largest draw is the mid-Atlantic for, for convention business. Consumer shows are mostly local events. Those are the local public coming to the convention center for events and activations. Sporting events are national.
Sporting events are national. Because the idea that 52% of the people that come to that convention center stay in a hotel, where's that information gathered? I've been to that convention center scores of times, if not hundreds of times. And no one's ever asked me where I was staying.
Typically, that's from what the information that we collect when we're booking conventions, booking sporting events, booking groups that utilize the building. We have, um, data and metrics that we use when signing new pieces of business that include overnight stay and zip code data associated with it.
And if you can wave a magic wand and make that convention center anything, you do anything to it, to optimize. I'm not talking about breaking even or minimizing the, the costs, trying to cover the costs. If you could optimize that convention center, what would you do?
Do you want to do, is from a national's perspective or just my opinion in the matter? Okay.
Nancy, use the microphone.
Okay. So I think that there are a couple of things. One, the building is 20 years old, so ensuring that we are taking care of the product that we have. I think that there are a couple of other things that are at play when you talk about national conventions, not only the hotel product that, um, we talked about here today, but also airlift and bringing folks into our community. From our leisure perspective, we're certainly a drive market and people come to Virginia Beach in a variety of ways to get to Virginia Beach from a convention perspective. For those of you that have traveled to go to conventions, obviously direct flights are something that our, our sales team is always looking for more of. And obviously more hotel rooms and, and product close to the building and attached to the building. Those are, those are some of the things that I would say are differentiators.
Thank you.
Okay, Worth.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. Thank you, Ms. Hellman and Mr. Sacks for the presentation and your previous presentations. I got a couple of things to, one thing to say and then a couple of questions. This presentation is very appropriate at this time as we, as a city and as a body, come up and make a decision on some land use. Uses plural around the, the land around the convention center, whether we weigh the importance or not importance of a convention center headquarters hotel, whether it's worth the investment or not. So we, and whether or not we should be in the convention business at all. Let's just be honest, and you addressed that today. These numbers are good from us perspective, but I, I do want to look a little further into it. But it's really important that we understand where we stand today with this. And just to make the point, just the .63, so the difference between .63 and, and the dollar is we, the city, feed the convention center in our annual budget. That's correct. To the tune of about $2 million, is that?
Give and take. I think in the COVID years, it was closer to three and maybe a little excess of three, but I think roughly around, it's roughly between two to three, but less than three, certainly.
So this is an important conversation and some decisions that will affect some decisions, I think for us as we move forward. So in the coverage ratio here, if I can ask this, did you, and also the others, did you consider repairs and maintenance? Is that is an annual, it should be an annual expense or taken into account?
Yeah, any, anything that's on the, you know, on the expense side of the ledger is, is gonna include there. Now, if there, if it's debt financed capital investment, then, then it wouldn't be in their operating statement.
Yeah, so like maintenance would be, but not like capital repair. So what we talked about at, um, the city council retreat and what we briefed you all about in November, about the need to do basically a capital repair to the roof and other assets in the convention center because it's getting to be older than 20 years, that wouldn't be inside the P and L.
But it's probably the same with the others as well.
Yes, from my understanding and from the, from my experience, from the ones I manage, they've all been loss leaders and they've all never really took the capital inside, into account associated with operation of the, the P and L.
I can see, just one more. So on the 34% of attendees are local and there is tremendous value, as Vice Mayor Wilson has said, to the convention center serving our city, our state of the city lunch tomorrow associated by the convention center. And many other local events happen there and it's of great value to our city. That being said, and if it weren't there, it would have to be held somewhere else. But does, do you know how the local participation in the other markets? Because 34%, that, these are our own citizens, they would also eat somewhere here. As that, that does affect the income, it's being counted twice. So how much, so 34% kind of average or that above average or?
It, it's on the high side and it is a function of that, that other category, which is a lot of local events. We don't count in the economic impact the spending of locals. So if they're attending an event and eating lunch out, but they're, but they're residents, then we don't include them in the economic impact.
Thank you.
Okay, Hutch.
So Nancy, I just wanted to offer again, sort of help as far as. To answer the question for Councilman Cummings, is the pickup report from what I've been used to seeing for the conferences and everything we go over are quite in depth. And when you sign up for a, like a fire conference, you're coming from around, see if a block of rooms at 15 hotels. I don't think it's very hard to get that. Whereas if you're going to our oyster roast we just had, you're probably not gonna have a pickup report, right? So that would, that would help understand why you know your numbers in my, that's how I've always looked at it.
So, um, meetings, conventions, sporting events that utilize the services of Convention and Visitors Bureau to book space, hold space, hold rooms and rates and blocks. We do analyze that information and we request that information from the event owner.
But that's probably how these numbers are built for you, right? Okay.
Okay, anyone else? You know what I think is really encouraging? That the pieces are coming together in a very, very big way. We are, do have a successful convention center. You take a look at the sports center, you know, a lot of the, you know, the data's the same thing. I was there a couple of weeks ago and they had an AAU track and field collegiate tournament going on and the, all the, the side floors were packed with other activities. And that just brings people in. Once again, I think our ultimate goal is that we become a top tier tourist destination. And I think Worth mentioned something very good. We're gonna be getting that plan on the 80 acres pretty soon. And I think a lot of times the conventions I've gone to, you know, whether it be Kansas City or whether it be in New Orleans or Las Vegas, you know, the experience, experiential stuff. And once again, if we start putting the master plan together and get some perhaps retail and restaurants within walking distance and other entertainment type situations there, um, you know, and then once again, what we heard about the vibe, we're getting ready to open Atlantic Park in a couple of months. You know, the Ruby Loop is gonna be another destination. And I just, you know, Mike comments before, this is gonna be a whole, basically quadrant of, of destination, not only for tourists, but for the people that live in Virginia Beach. Patrick and I last year went to Steele's 50th anniversary. They took two ballrooms. Patrick, was it 5,000 people there?
Over 5,000, Mayor.
Over 5,000 people. And everybody was happy. They had food service and everything and just a festive spirit and the mention of the, of the oyster roast, it gets people to the oceanfront. But once again, I think we are, our master plan is to get to that top tier level where Virginia Beach is regarded as a top destination. And I'll tell you what, you know, what we're hearing today, I think we're moving in that direction. Kudos to everybody. Rosemary.
Great report and I love the convention center. I think it is stunning, like Josh, it's a stunning deal, building. It's really beautiful and it doesn't look like it's 20 years old. It, it really doesn't. But I do think that we've really got to face the fact that we're a victim of our own success and we've got parking issues because so many people want to go there and the sports center. And this weekend was, it's not, yeah, I think we all know that this weekend, there were a lot of issues. And I think next weekend coming up, we've got, have similar issues. We, we need, we really need some short-term solutions and some long-term solutions. Short-term, maybe for this coming weekend, maybe we gather up all of our vans and go to the hotels and shuttle people. If I got, if I was on vacation or I was at a, and I got towed, I'm not sure I'd want to come back. That's really creates a big negative. And we've got, and we've, we've talked about this parking issue before. I think we need a parking garage and that's lots of money. But this, this is a major issue is we've got a lot of things going on and there's just not enough places for people to park. Whether it's, gosh, I didn't want to say charging for park. What, we, we've really got to figure out how to deal with this parking issue because it's gonna create, it's gonna put a blemish on our city. You go and you get towed, it's not a good thing. What happens if you get towed, either you get towed, you get really angry. You know, once the, if one is the inconvenience, you're gonna go find your car. And the second, then you gotta pay money to get it back. So we, we've really got to wrap our, get our arms wrapped around this. And hopefully we can do something to be prepared for this weekend coming up. So, but I love the convention center, it's fabulous and y'all do a great job.
And Vice, and I do want to clarify, we do do shuttling, you know, so the city probably pays, what, about $50,000 for these weekends in terms of shuttling? And then we also, council authorized us to work with the schools to use the school buses on the weekends as well. We, we provide it, we have a robust shuttling plan. One of the hard things is that a lot of times, um, the people who are coming to guests don't want to take advantage of the shuttling. We can't make them take it, you know, but it is, some of that's part of it. We pay $50,000 roughly on these types of weekends for the weekend for shuttling and we do use the school buses as well.
Maybe we can put a stronger message after our hotel owners to say, encourage your guests to ride this because you may have a bad experience and that's not a good thing. And we need to work harder with our hoteliers.
Okay, Worth, Hutch and Amelia.
Thank you, Mayor and Vice Mayor Wilson. I was gonna save this for council comments, but I think it's, let's go ahead and take it up now. As a District Six rep for this area, my phone blew up Saturday and Sunday with text messages and photographs of, of tourists being towed, among other things. And this is a good problem to have, a problem nonetheless. And we are a victim of our own success, but we, victim is, is the key word there. So we do, so all that being said, can I also suggest that we have either law enforcement or someone at key intersections to help direct traffic and, and places for auxiliary parking?
We can look into that, but usually whenever we have those events, the law enforcement is needed for additional coverage elsewhere. But we can talk to the police department, maybe the sheriff's office can help out as well. You know, but it's something we could look into.
I'll put on a uniform.
There you go.
You might get arrested.
So it's good to supplement our salaries, that's a good thing. Hutch?
You took my, I completely lost that thought. No, I wanted to say one more time about going back to the fire conference in the snow is that I know your team is up here, they were, oh, there's Michael over there and Stella and Heather and everybody else. It was a tough, tough few days, a lot of, lot going on. I appreciate their professionalism and their help and, and yours and everybody else. It, it made it, it came together as, as best we could for us. And I'm saying that, I'm sure they're, everybody's getting the same, same treatment for that. So it's, it's a kudos to you and your team.
Thank you.
Okay, Amelia.
Well, Councilman Remy and I experienced that too. Even Sunday, we're down there for a retreat and people couldn't even get off the express. So what did we do about that? To even get there, some people thought it was an accident or something. But no, the chair leaders and all that was going on, people were stuck on the expressway.
And I think Mr. Mayor, members of council, we're, we're probably gonna have to really think about this as well. And when Atlantic Park comes online and the dome comes online, it's just gonna exasperate that problem. We've already talked about the capacity issues on Pacific Avenue. You know, so this is gonna be something that's gonna be with us for a significant period of time. And unless we build parking garages and do some other road improvements, this is gonna be a feature of, um, of this time of the season. I've been here five years now and these two weeks, every March, it happens. You know, and it's been happening like that religiously as well, you know. So until we find a way to build additional parking garage and understanding, a lot of the capacity that we had to do these things was eroded because of, um, inflation on a lot of our projects as well. You know, this is really what we're doing right now is the best that we can do. We have a robust parking plan. We're paying tremendous amount of money annually to, in each of these weekends to address it. We're working with the schools to use as many school buses as possible. We're using private shuttles, you know, it's the best we can do. We're using the lead a lot, we're using the police department lot, we're using other partners' lots to find additional parking capacity.
Okay, Stacy and then Amelia.
Yeah, I just want to note that the issues that we're having with parking and attendance and crowding. and crowding are the results of sporting and sports activities. And that's, there's a huge demand for that. And that, every time we have an event like this, it packs out, it packs the hotels, it packs the restaurants and we could, if, we could greatly duplicate all of those if we had the capacity and if we had the, if that was our focus. There is an endless supply, our demand for sports activity facilities.
Okay, Amelia.
I was just ringing up about the highway. If we had signs out where, so people can take Bird Neck because they all want to come straight down the main one. You know, it's just to defer the traffic and then still have the shuttles when they come down Bird Neck or somewhere else or around the other way where the aquarium is to come back. Everyone wants to come straight down because that's what they're familiar with. Maybe something, some sign issue could help redirect traffic.
Okay, Josh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to chime in and acknowledge what the, what the Vice Mayor said, that we really need to think about it. I totally agree that, and I'm supportive of having a conversation about parking in and around the convention center area and really thoughtfully kind of, you know, thoughtfully approaching where they're, where it or they might be located because, I mean, talk about an immovable object, you know? So I, I think we really just need to kind of, and I know we've got that, the study coming back to us and, and just, just give it some good thought.
So Mr. Mayor, the study is expected to come back to you at your first meeting in April, right? And it'll give you options, you know, in terms of where best to put the parking garages. And if you all want to authorize any other development around that area, you all get that opportunity again in keeping with your direction from last year as well, you know? So you'll, you'll get a chance to provide direction and guidance to staff, probably your first briefing in April.
You know, I just think that's at this point very timely and necessary and, but once again, I think if we understand the complete picture about the potential of that area as being a significant growth and revenue generator, and I think that would also put into context, you know, how we plan to build it, how do we plan to, you know, build the garages, but also to really leverage that area. You know, that, you know, Worth is right, that's a golden opportunity in that 80 acres that we have there. But, but once again, it's the, you know, especially with the, you know, the dome coming on and everything. So I think the conversation in April is going to be timely. Okay, thank you very much. Good news.
All right, so Mr. Mayor, members of council, the next update will be provided by LJ Hanson, Director of Public Works. This is about the Law Enforcement Training Academy. We're going to be looking for guidance from city council on two specific, probably one specific point, really is to get a sense of, we didn't, we did the study as council-funded and now we need to get a general sense of what location would council move forward with us moving forward with in terms of designing and possibly building out on. We got a recommendation and we'll seek your guidance for support for that recommendation. And the next voice you'll hear will be LJ Hanson to talk about Lita.
And if I could speak for Mr. Belucci who couldn't be here today, need a Lita.
I knew that was coming, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council. It's my privilege this afternoon to join you to talk about the Law Enforcement Training Academy. With me is Daryl Henderson. This is the city's architect and he did a lot of the legwork in working with our consultant and trying to put together this information for you. As part of this presentation, we're going to show you some concept level sketches and some concept level pricing. These are not to be used for planning. This is just to help us understand if we're in the right ballpark. We want to make sure that we're in, in the right ballpark. So we'll, I'll try to emphasize that a couple of times, but hopefully I won't repeat myself too badly. A little bit about where we're going today, we're going to give you a little bit of background for some of the newer members of council may not be entirely familiar with, with how we got to where we are today. Some of the work that we've done since the last update, which was done a little over a year ago, presentation of a concept layout. That concept layout, we're going to show it in its existing location, but it is independent. That concept is agnostic. It could go anywhere, but we had to show it somewhere, so this is where we're showing it. As, as part of this presentation, as the manager mentioned, we're, we're seeking feedback from city council specifically on two items. One is location, where we would like to put the Lita facility, should it be constructed? And then a little bit of feedback as it relates to what we've come up with in terms of a concept and some of our conceptual pricing and scope.
Before LJ goes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, the, the police chief and sheriff has, they've been a part of this, right LJ?
Yes, sir. I was just getting ready to say that.
Okay. And then I reviewed it and I've already made some comments to it. So you'll see, what you'll see is a wishlist of items, you know, so there's some things in there that I may have concerns about and the council certainly may have concerns about. Not saying that you will have concerns, but in terms of, if you see questions, none of this is port in concrete yet, right? This is really just concept ideation stage.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I apologize for the formatting of the slides. They didn't come out this way on my computer and they didn't come out this way on your printout, so I, I promise it was better before. A little bit of the background, the Virginia Beach Police Department and the Sheriff's Organization have been utilizing the old Sea-Tac Elementary School for training purposes since about 2000. The Lita, as we refer to it, is one of three sites that police and sheriff use in their training. The others, the other two are Creed's and the Z facility and, which is located in Moyauk, which is where they use for a lot of their small arms training. The Lita facility is relatively unchanged since its utilization as an elementary school and that's part of the problem. It, it is, is really not formatted to be an institution for adults that are studying this particular coursework. And, and just a little bit in terms of ownership, the Lita facility is currently being leased to the city from the school district. It's a nominal $1 a year lease, but it is a lease nonetheless. The building itself is over 50 years old. It does not have appropriate technology or really even enough room to meet the needs of, of what we're asking it to do. Most of the facilities in the building, including the restrooms, were constructed and outfitting for the fixtures of elementary age children. And so you can imagine what that means for grown adult men and women to be utilizing elementary age children facilities. They're not all that way, but there are certainly some that are that way. And we have been trying to replace some as, as time goes on, but it was always anticipated to be a short-term fix, which is just really stretched on for a very long term. The school is prone to flooding and we, we do have some issues in, in terms of flooding. Although we're maintaining it, it's just not the best facility. In 2018, a CIP was proposed. It was funded with a nominal amount of money, I think in 2020, about $350,000. That'll, that is only enough to allow us to do some steady work to try to identify what the facility is, should be, and, and to be able to move forward. So there is not a CIP with a appropriate amount of funding for actual construction, but rather just enough for us to be able to study the issue and be able to come back to you, which is, I believe what we've done at this point. In 2019, we engaged with the sheriff's and police department to try and get some understanding of what their space needs and what their desires were. Subsequent to 2019, a lot of things changed in the policing career. There were changes in terms of how our academies started to function and there were also changes, as councils are aware, in terms of how many members we were bringing in, in terms of class size. So a lot of things changed. In 2019, we estimated we needed about 60,000 square feet and here in a moment, you're going to see that that number is, is substantially more than what, what it was in 2019. Also, since 2019, we've looked at a number of possible sites. We looked at locations on Leroy Road, the existing location. We looked at, at potentially locating it at Creed's. And then we've had a number of unsolicited submittals, one of which has, I believe, resurfaced again recently. All of those have been evaluated and have given, due diligence has been given to all of them. We have not settled on a final location, but we do have a recommendation for you today and we hope to receive some feedback from you. Following our presentation last year, in January of last year, staff following city council's direction revisited the basis of design, went back, met with the police department and the sheriff's office to update their requirements, determined what things that they would like to see. What Daryl has done is tried to solicit feedback from the police and sheriff's department, who are in many ways our customer. City council, of course, and the taxpayers are, are, are our ultimate customer. However, we're treating the police department and sheriff's office as the, as the end users and so in many ways they function as our customer. We asked them for what they, what they wanted to see, what they felt that they needed to have. We, we put all that information together into the design concept that we're going to show you here in a few minutes. But ultimately, we need city council to, to give us some feedback to see if we're on the right track with, with your dream and your vision. The city's consultant generated that potential concept and I'm going to show you that here in just a moment. This one, this slide, I apologize for, for its size, but what you'll see is, as I mentioned before, we had about 60,000 square feet. What you'll see now is with the updated requests and then looking forward and forecasting out to the year 2043 and anticipated size requirements, we, we've gone to about 131,000 square feet in total. The design concept itself is broken down into three constituent parts and this is meant to mirror the things that police officers and sheriff's officers work on as they go through their, through their academy. Mental, physical and legacy. You might also think of that as mind, body and spirit. There are two primary entrances in the concept to the facility. One would be for the academy, for the cadets, sort of a employee entrance, I guess, although not really, but it is, it is geared towards their mindset, towards their frame of thought. And then another for law enforcement administrators and the public to enter. The main public entry leads in directly into an auditorium, which means that if we were to desire to use this facility for external meetings, that type of thing, something like that could be arranged. The last bullet here, this presentation has been put together for a little while, but I did want to mention that the design includes a legacy memorial garden. This presentation precedes the events of February 21st, but of course, that takes on a, a different meaning as we move into the future and we are always mindful of, of what we're designing and what we're working on and who it's for. So I mentioned, the concept is, again, we're, we're showing the design concept in its current location off of Bird Neck. It does not have to be here. This, this building could be relocated to any number of places, but if you look at the design concept, what you'll notice is on the left-hand side of the image, you'll see that it has body in the center, spirit, and then on the right-hand side, mind. And if you're looking at it on the monitor, it's a little bit of an eye test, but if you're looking at the printouts that are at each of your, each of your seats, I think you can see that a little bit more closely. That concept will flow through as, as we move through the remaining slides, you'll kind of notice that there's a side, set aside for physical activity, training, those types of things. There's an area for reflection, introspection, the, the elements that might go towards the spirit, establishing the appropriate decorum and the appropriate mindset for the job at hand. And then there's a academy side for training, the coursework, the classwork, that type of thing and administrative offices. I mentioned that what we came away from was about 131,000 square feet on the, on the design concept. It's about 77,000 on the first floor, 54,000 on the second floor. The, the difference there is of course going to be mechanical space and, and other non-serviceable space. The estimate of probable cost, the total construction estimate is about $82.6 million. And I want to stress, this is not a planning number. This is not a number that we would go to budget management services and say, please program $82.6 million. The cost of this facility would be significantly more than that. The $82.6 million is geared around, is this the right type of building? This is the total construction cost of the building itself, understanding that were we to locate it in one place, we would have a different set of design constraints than if we were to locate it in another place. It doesn't include the design itself, which is probably about 10% of this. It doesn't include the furnishings, fittings and equipment that might go along with it. It doesn't include contingency. This, this $82.6 million number is really the number that we felt we could give to you at this state, that you would be able to comment back to us, yeah, that's the ballpark we thought it was, or no, that's not the ballpark, we, we need to look at another ballpark. And, and, and that's the purpose of that number. So I, I just want to make sure that we put that in the right context. The project schedule moving forward, if council chooses to move forward, it would take us about 18 months of design to complete the design, once the site is located and we have some understanding of where city council wants us to go. Followed by city reviews, biddings, negotiations and then constructions and move in. Construction, we believe for this facility would be about 28 to 30 months after the design, after, excuse me, construction, we believe we could go to construction about 28 to 30 months after the design begins and the construction itself would take about 24 to 30 months. So in total, could be about five years before we were able to move in. If, if everything went on that track, we could expedite, we could move it a little slower. A lot of this is going to depend upon where city council is and your desire to fund it and how you choose to fund it. All right, I promised you a concept. Here's the concept. You've seen this slide before. If we start to cut away the different levels, this is the first floor and what you can see on the first floor, as I mentioned, is on the left-hand side, you'll see that there's a lot of elements that are geared towards fitness, hand-to-hand defensive tactics, other things that are geared towards the body, right? Training the body, getting, getting the cadets into shape. The center part is the common area, complete with honor wall, some exhibits, that type of thing to help get the spirit in the right place. And then on the right-hand side is, is the mind. And that's where you see a lot of the sheriff's office administrative, the police department administrative, shared space in terms of auditorium. We really tried to maximize the amount of shared space that was possible. We have two different use, two different user groups here, both of which have a similar mission, but not the same mission and their training is not exactly the same. Nevertheless, we looked for ways to find commonality where we could share space. While they might not share it at the same time, they would be able to utilize it at different times. The second floor plan, similar in nature, on the right-hand side, you'll see that it's additional classroom, computer labs, shared space to the degree possible with a couple of specific areas that we had to identify for individual purposes and needs. On the left-hand side, you'll see also the continued stressing of the body part of, of the overall equation. And then we have a couple of really nice renderings. Again, this is shown at the Bird Neck, its existing location off of Bird Neck. It does not need to go here, but this just made for a really nice rendering. This would be on the backside from the memorial gardens. As part of our evaluation, one of the sites we identified and, and reviewed was in the ITA. There are some upsides to using the ITA. There are a couple of positives actually. The existing site of the facility, as I mentioned, is where we place it for the, for the rendering. However, it does fit in this location. You'll see the, the red box with the red arrow. That's not necessarily where we would propose it would go in the ITA, but it does give us some idea of the size of the facility and where it would lay out. It could be, it could be moved around. In the ITA study, Area 6 was identified as a municipal service area. So when the ITA study was put together, there were a number of spaces that were laid out. Area 6 was identified for potential municipal uses. I wanted to tell you a little bit about the process and where we stand today. We have met with the stakeholders, the police department, the sheriff's department. We've developed a concept. We have reviewed that concept with city manager, city manager's office. We're reviewing today with you the concept that, that we'd like to put forward. And then next, with your comments and the city manager's comments, it's our intent to go back to the sheriff's office, to the police department. to go back to the sheriff's office, to the police department, share with them the things that we heard from you, that they will hear from you as part of this public meeting, and then refine that design and begin working on an actual design, should city council want us to move in that direction. That would be a funding-dependent decision, though. To move to design would be about $8 million. We figure probably about $8.6 million, 10% of our building is what we would typically estimate for design. We will be requesting that that goes into the annual budget. What actually goes through the annual budget, that is a decision that I don't know the answer to yet. That's a city manager and budget management services decision. But nevertheless, that would go in in year one. And then at some point in the future, we would come out of that design process with a better understanding of where we would be looking at in terms of actual programming for what would cost to construct it. And that would also be a design or a funding-dependent decision. My slides are disappearing on me. After reviewing, though, all the locations, the Department of Public Works, we are recommending that we place the LITA facility in the ITA. And we came to that recognition as a result of the fact that we heard a lot of comments, both from city council, from the community, other interested parties, about the potential for the existing LITA facility. What that potential is, Public Works has no say in what that is, but there are a number of other things that that site could be utilized for, and we don't believe that LITA would necessarily be the highest and best use for that. Support for locating the LITA facility in the ITA was expressed during the recent discussion of park amenities in the ITA, and we heard that, and we followed through with that. It is worth noting, however, though, if the LITA facility goes in the ITA, there will be some additional development costs incurred. It would require Landstown 4, I believe is the correct word, the correct phase to be constructed. Now, the design plans for Landstown 4 are already complete. It is basically a shovel-ready project, but that would need to be part of the overall development to be able to place LITA in that location. And at this time, we really are seeking feedback from city council on all the information I've given you. I know it's a lot. I know there's some, it's not a lot of certainty, because there's a lot of uncertainty in as far as where it could go and whether the scope is the appropriate scope or not. But we wanted to see what we could get back from city council, and I stand by for questions and comments.
Mr. Mayor.
LJ, great presentation, really, really good. The old Sea-Tac Elementary School property.
Yes, ma'am.
And we're leasing that.
Yes, ma'am.
What's left on that? I mean, what are the terms, you know, where are we in that lease?
I believe we're on year five of our most recent five-year lease. I think we have one year left on that.
So I agree with your recommendation on the ITA. I think that would be the ideal. One is, we already own it, so we don't have to purchase land, which will be a savings, even though we have to do some more infrastructure costs. And then while it's being built, hopefully the schools will let us stay at Sea-Tac Elementary until that's finished, and then it'll be a smooth transition from one place to another.
Yes, ma'am. I don't believe we've received any input from schools that they have a desire for us to vacate Sea-Tac in the short term. I think they'd like to discuss long-term, what the long-term plans are, but they have not asked us to vacate in the short term.
So I mean, even if we wanted to stay at the Bird Neck facility, they'd want us to pay for it if we decided to stay there. It's nice that we already own the, and then they can sell it, and it's right there at the entrance of the expressway, which is a great spot for the business. I think it's a very valuable piece, and that would give the school board, you know, some extra funding for whatever they need if they choose to sell it. So I think this is really, really a great presentation. Thank you.
Hey, Cash.
Yeah, thank you, LJ, for the presentation, and thank you, sir, for your engineering skills and design. Speaking of design, if we move to design, that would be $8 million, if we move to design.
Yes, sir.
City currently owns that property.
In the ITA, sir? Yes, sir.
Just clarity, I think it's a smart move. I think it's a smart move, so.
Anybody else? Okay, let's go, Stacey and Work.
Thank you for the presentation, LJ. I do want to reiterate that the Bird Neck property has some great alternative uses, and so the opportunity cost of locating it there is tough. The ITA can't really be used for anything except for these types of projects and for, you know, park, open space, and this was something that was contemplated in the ITA. Was there any thought given to having a shooting range with LITA?
We've evaluated shooting ranges in a couple of other locations. We didn't specifically evaluate a shooting range at the ITA. The issue with the shooting range is the permitting process and the public engagement process is quite extensive and quite difficult. This would be a challenging place to place a firing range. It really is located, while it's below the green line, it is still somewhat in the center of the city, and it is surrounded by communities. It would be a challenge to put a firing range there. I wouldn't say it's not possible, and it wouldn't meet, it more than likely wouldn't meet all of the requirements of the police department, and I'm out on a limb here, because I hate to speak for the police department.
I'll speak a little bit to that. I think it's, the permitting process will make it difficult, then if you try to make it indoor, it'll make it more expensive. The other component about it, to LJ's point, it's still too close to residential neighborhoods, and when the PD needs to shoot at night, that'll be a concern as well. Coming from a previous city where the city owned acreage outside the city, then the community built around it, there was tremendous amount of community pushback ultimately for, that caused that city to close their outdoor range and procure further places out. It's always difficult to try to bring shooting ranges around a city, and I don't know to what extent we'd be able to get it permitted from all the different regulatory agencies that need to chime in on it.
I wasn't necessarily advocating for a shooting range in the ITA, realizing the challenges. But at this point, we are dependent upon someone else for that, and, you know, we're not in control of the future there. So if we were to lose that, it would put us in a big bind. And I don't know if we need to think about the future and being able to control our own destiny where it comes to shooting rates, which is not something you can put up overnight, and it's, there aren't a lot of alternatives.
I, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Okay, so council did receive some, that council asked me to investigate probably about maybe two or three meetings ago, that's further down in some part of the city. We do have staff looking at that, and then we'll bring that, and it's a purchase option, I think. We'll have staff review that, vet that, run it through the different departments, and then we'll bring that to council and see if council wants us to explore that pitch as well. We are aware that we do lease the premises out in North Carolina, and you always probably want to be in charge of your domain as it relates to stuff like that as well. But we'll vet that and we'll bring that to council to determine if council wants us to explore it any further.
Thank you, Maynard.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. And as we move forward on this, I mean, I agree with the location in the ITA, subject to a lot more vetting, of course, and I'd like to hear from the district representative on that as well. But as, you know, funding is going to be a big question. It's not a $64,000 question, it's a big one. So Chesapeake just announced, I believe they're going to move forward with a law enforcement training center. I believe it's a little over $100 million.
$150.
How much?
$150.
$150 million, so it's a comparable. So maybe we can collaborate and learn some things or trade some information with them. That being said, I know this is not the topic today, but I do think, like schools, they publish private partnership or utilizing the private sector to help us save costs, to help us finance it, to help, certainly help us to build it. We're going to have to hire a contractor or whatever, but I think that's, there are creative ways out there. I'm somewhat aware, but not really, but I hope we can look into that, you know, across the country, how other localities are doing this.
That could be something that council wants us to do, but if council wants us to do that, then we probably shouldn't start the design process with that. You know, so like, we probably need to start that in the front part of the design process.
Right.
Yeah, so council should take that up for consideration, but the direction y'all did give in the retreat was to bring forward a plan to fund the LITA. So we are going to work towards bringing that to the council in the budget. But if council wants us to find like an alternative owner-operator model, we need to get that direction on the front end.
Hey, Barbara.
Well, of course, when we did the ITA study, the city manager at that time asked that we locate a place for public services that would be away from neighborhoods and would be able to be buffered from neighborhoods, as well as having access from, you know, for the trucks and so forth, that would be needed if it were the public waste facility, which might need to place at some point, or something like this, which would certainly, so this certainly does conform with that. It's very hard to locate, though, a firing range. I know that it was Creed's for many years, and that got to be an issue there, was that the old Creed's airfield. And so it was moved from that place. Have we considered maybe jointly with Creed, I mean, with Chesapeake doing a firing range, something that they could use and we could use? They may have a more remote area at Creed's. I mean, that part of the facility we could share on. This is going to be very hard to find a place. I mean, if Creed's airfield didn't work, there's not too many places that are more, that are not as secluded as that, because that has water on both sides, and so it's going to be really hard to locate in Virginia Beach anyway. I would think that maybe that could be a component that we could go in and add. I think the, is that the Chesapeake, though, also includes their fire training.
Yes, ma'am.
Very unique fire training facility. So theirs is police and fire training, but I wish.
And sheriff as well, too.
And sheriff, all of it together. But, yeah, I think this is a good location for it and should fit what we looked at with everything. Of course, all of it would come to what is the best place as far as soils, but you're about in the middle of it, so probably going to be as good as you can hear of.
Okay, Amelia, then Josh.
Yes, thank you again for the presentation. Just wanted to ask, you mentioned $82 million estimate, but at the same time, I noted you said this did not include site development.
Yes, ma'am.
Also site, FFE. So is that doubling what that is?
No, ma'am, it wouldn't double it. Really, what we wanted to include was to give you a scope of about how much the building itself would cost. FFE, that's the furniture, the fixtures.
Equipment.
Equipment, yeah, things that police and sheriff are going to want. They're going to want some high-tech gadgetry to be able to train their officers for the 21st century policing that they're doing right now over here in Building 11. So they're going to want to include some of that stuff. We didn't include that in the pricing, because what we were trying to, what we were really trying to do is establish an understanding of where city council's comfort was in terms of the size and scope of what we had. Again, we met with police and sheriff, and we said, tell us what you'd like to see. They told us what they'd like to see. We took all that information, went to our consultant. The consultant put this together and said, this seems to meet the requirements for what they've asked for. Now we're bringing it to you all to say, is this the estimate? Is this, that's why I said, is this the ballpark we want to be in? And if it is, that's great news for police and sheriff, but if it's an avenue that you'd like us to look at doing something slightly different, or that's what the purpose of the $82.6 million was, just to help us understand if we're in the right ballpark.
Thank you.
Josh.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Hanson, thank you, and Mr. Anderson, thank you. So you had mentioned Chesapeake is, I guess, building one or budgeted for, what was it, $130 million?
About $150, but I don't think that includes all the work necessary as well, so I think that's the building cost.
Okay, and do we have, do we have a set? I'm just trying to gauge to like.
If you're not, but go ahead, sir.
Square footage? No idea.
I can get your information on it.
Just quick math, it's, you know, $630 a square foot is what we're looking at, and I know a lot of these, you know, a lot of these, you know, the space design is tangible, and, you know, maybe, you know, if you, how big a pool do you need, how big of an auditorium you need? I mean, all those things kind of get shaken out, you know, when and where they do, but I'd love to have an idea, especially since our capital projects are coming in, you know, 50%, 100% over what was originally budgeted, that we've got, that we've got a good sense of what Chesapeake got itself into, how much that was per square foot. Are we looking at something comparable? And is this $82.6 million really, does that hold water? And I know you said you were just kind of throwing a dart to see if this was kind of in the realm of reasonable for us, but I just put that to you.
So I would say Chesapeake is like early stage. I don't even know if they started design yet. I think they got a funding plan appropriated. I think they did a meals tax increase in their last budget to cover the cost of this. Yeah, so I don't know, I don't necessarily know to what extent they're aware of like what the numbers are coming in at yet.
I'm supportive of, you know, us going down this road. I just, you know, 131,000 square feet is essentially like a 10-story building. I mean, the equivalent of a 10-story building. So I just want to make sure we're, you know, we're in the right space with the right size, and especially considering what other localities are doing, that they're doing the same thing.
Yes, sir, and again, I hate coming to you and asking for more money. I do. It is, it's humbling to come and ask and say, we gave you an estimate and we missed. And I'm not taking all the blame. The economy of the world has done some things in the last couple of years that I don't think any of us ever knew could happen. But what we're really trying to do in this setting, and what I hope to try to do on some of these other projects as we move forward, is to give you this rough estimate number, understand where we're at, and make sure that council's comfortable with that rough estimate. Then go to design, get a good, solid number, and come back to you and say, this is a number we can deliver the project at, so that instead of having the taxpayer feel like I threw out a number that I don't have a whole lot of confidence in, because I really couldn't at this point. The soils, as council member Henley pointed out, are different in the ITA than they would be on Bird Neck. The development cost to get there, what we need to bring in in terms of site development, entirely different in each location. What we would really like to do is get to that 30%, 40%, 60%, somewhere in there, when I could then come back to city council and say, now I know what we need to know to give you a good estimate, so that I don't have to hopefully come back and ask for more money later.
Totally fair.
Okay, Hutch and Barbara.
So I actually have a question for Ms. Henley in a second, about those Creeds. But with, do we know, and I wish I knew this, the Chesapeake shooting range? I thought they went out to the same place we go.
Mr. Anderson, I think I put out messages to verify. I think that's the same.
Yeah.
I think that's the case, but I didn't want to say that.
I believe it is. But it's not to say that we couldn't develop something later, five years, whatever. I'm not, that's another horse. So, okay, I just think it's something we should probably find out. And then the one thing that I wanted to say to, just a little bit of knowledge on the Chesapeake Supercenter, if you will, it is going to be probably larger than ours, because that price should reflect that, because they're having three entities use it, not two. You know what I mean? It's, and although there is shared between police and sheriff, yeah, there's a little bit of difference when you get to the fire side of things, if you're building a true fire training center. You know, the burn building, I'm not saying that's in the price, but.
Yep.
Go ahead.
You're correct, and I also want to say.
Would you say that again, that I'm correct?
My wife is going to watch him.
Yeah, I need you. Sorry, buddy, I'm sorry, it was too easy.
So, and you're correct, it's 150 for the buildings. Okay, 150 for the building, and it doesn't include site. I think, I think it's their land, so they don't have to purchase it, but it doesn't include utilities as well. So like what LJ said, that 150 could turn to 200 real quick, because they don't have water and sewer, I think they don't have sewer there or something like that, so that's gonna be a significant project cost.
I'm just saying, both of them, we are sort of doing apples and oranges here. We just need, I just want everybody to know that it's not just straightforward that way, not in my opinion. And then, ma'am, I wanted to ask you, is like, when did we, because I know we were using it from the fireside, we were still using Creed's, and we had helped build some structures down there for the shooting range. Do we remember when that ceased to be used as a shooting range? And if, as Mr. Cummings said, if something did happen, push come to shove, I'm not saying that it would be a forever spot, but could we use that in a pinch to, you know, let's say we had to certify a recruit school or something for PD?
Time flies, so I can't tell.
Yeah, I couldn't remember.
It's been a while, but I would say between five and 10 years.
Yeah, it feels more closer to 10 for me, because you figure now the COVID and all, you know, trying to use that as a, I think it's probably getting closer to 10.
Probably.
Yeah.
Mr. Hudson and Councilmember Henley, I think I heard it, I don't know if I heard it from you or somebody else from this other part of the city. I remember what I heard was that it was there, but they, when they started getting a lot of complaints from all the adjoining neighborhoods, especially with the night fires, and then somebody alleged that there was an errant round that ended up on somebody's property, and he said it was a police department. So I think that was some of the precipice, why they ended up leaving and moving to Moyac.
Okay.
Not very many people around there, but anyway.
Yeah, Barbara.
One of the other costs that's not in this is your infrastructure, because there's no road to this place.
Yes, ma'am.
Would that have to be a part of this project cost? Or, I mean, the Nemo Parkway only comes in to the spot right here, so Nemo Parkway would have to be extended, or Landstown, of course, would have to be, I mean, it would be one of two or maybe both. So there's no road here at this point, so.
Yes, ma'am. We, yes, ma'am, we do anticipate that to be part of the development cost, and that's, that's part of the site development that we talk about. In terms of, of how big it is, it really is gonna depend upon what you're comparing it against. If we were to try and do a lot of infrastructure improvements at, at the site where it is currently, it would be a little bit less expensive, but in some ways it would be more expensive because you have to deal with all the existing infrastructure that's there, working around the neighbor schedules and all, all of the existing avenues that we have to go with in terms of the existing training academy. Developing in the ITA, we don't have a lot of those constraints. It's greenfield, for the most part, it's greenfield development. But yes, it would be expensive to extend Landstown, and we do have design plans for Landstown.
Just comparison of that little bit of Innovation Park, who don't weigh that we put in that is 22 million, and that's hardly any distance at all. This is quite a lot of, quite a, quite a lot of road you're gonna be building.
Yes, ma'am.
I think it's gonna be many, many millions.
Yes, ma'am. The, the upside though is it does then open that area up for the, the additional municipal facilities that we will have in the future.
Well, I would hate to see it all, all credited to this particular project though, because it will be many other uses. It's kind of a shame that it would be even labeled as a cost of this project, but, you know, unless you wanted to put a nice dirt road in there, it's gonna cost you several.
We lived with dirt roads for many years, they worked fine.
Washing facility.
Depends on what you, what you are gonna try to do before, but if you're gonna try to do this as the, an extension of Nemo Parkway or something, it's, it's gonna cost, what you've got is the cost of the building.
Yes, ma'am.
We'll give you gravel, Barbara, no problem.
Fine, works.
Okay, anybody else? Oh, I guess our list of has to haves keeps on growing, and, but the point is, you know, what's the option? Currently, the building's not gonna last long. I think that thing is gonna be held together with duct tape for, you know, in the next five years. And the fact that we're looking at five years, you know, I think we at least have to move forward with design. And let me just say that even, you know, the 82 million dollar price tag, I can tell you to build a high school now is 400 to 500 thousand. A million. I went back to when I was born, okay? No, four, you know, 400 to 500 million dollars, we're talking a half a billion dollars to build a high school these days. So, but once again, Patrick, let me ask you, is any model out there with cities actually building a mega, you know, one that multiple cities use for training that we, that could help?
Some places out west that have like joint fire departments that cover like multi-jurisdictional areas do a big joint mega.
Facility.
You know, and, but I, it's usually you end up with, usually you end up with some kind of like infighting in terms of how do you maintain?
Yeah, okay, no problem. I'm just trying to think about, you know, ways to help pay for this thing. But, you know, once again, I think, is anybody object that we, us going forward with design so we figure out how much, you know, this puppy is gonna cost us?
And Mr. Mayor, in keeping with your direction in retreat, we're bringing this up for consideration. The funding is gonna be taken up as part of the budget process.
Okay.
Right? I think right now, the direction that, the guidance we're looking for is, it seems like council's concurs with, it's okay to start really working with the police department, the sheriff's department, and conceptualizing it for the ITA, to be placed in the ITA. And then if we get that understanding, that we'll bring it forward in budget process of a, of a plan on how we pay for it, and if council then moves forward with that, then we got really a go-ahead to move forward with design. And then as the design continues, if council approves that, then we'll bring forward, not options, but just update you all on how the design is going, and then you can give us any feedback as part of that process before we start construction.
Yeah, and I think there's consensus for the ITA. You know, we own it, and you know, that, that helps out somewhat with the cost. But, you know, I think, I think you're spot on. Let's go ahead and move forward in that direction.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you.
All right, time for council comments, and if you don't mind me just mentioning, last Friday, Patrick Hutch and I had the pleasure of going to a fire graduation. And this was a little bit unique, I'm gonna ask Hutch to really expound on that. They actually graduated two classes, 20 and 30. And if you remember, last year, Chief Pravis came and said, boy, we're desperate for folks. And he said, we'll give you 30. But I'll tell you what, it was amazing, 50 graduates, and what do you think, Patrick? About 1,500 people in the gallery?
Easily.
Yeah.
Easily.
Oh, I got pictures, I'll show you. And I'll tell you what, it was really, you know, touching to see it, and, but I'll tell you what, it was good government work. Hutch, what's your thoughts?
Oh, just echoing what you said, is that it's the largest graduate, recruit school graduation ever for the fire department in the history of the city, so that was pretty impressive. And the, the amount of folks that were there, I count, I didn't do the exact math, but it was 18 seats across and 22 rows down on both sides, and you know, none of the rank and file were gonna sit down, so they were all standing in the back, and there were a couple of hundred back there, because what they do is the companies that are receiving the recruits, they will try to come in uniform and then welcome them, you know, as they see them come across the screen, because that's when everybody finds out, when you come across and it, you know, it says, Councilwoman Rouse, Company 18, you know, that's when you find out where you're going. So the company is there to welcome them to the, to the shift. So it was, it was an impressive, impressive event, it really was.
Now, Patrick, and I'll tell you what, you know, like I said, it was, it was just such a warm and, you know, energy in that room, and, you know, a lot of happy people, a lot of happy families, and, you know, Virginia Beach is, you know, grateful. Okay, anybody else, council comments? Okay, word.
Thank you, Mayor. So two things related to the resort. About a month ago, so ago, we had a presentation from Emily Archer with Reimagine Atlantic Avenue, and we've programmed $48 million for that and found out that the cost is in excess of $100 million to do all 40 blocks of Atlantic Avenue. And so the Resort Advisory Commission and the various, there's two, two subcommittees there have taken a look at this, and we're gonna get another presentation, I believe, Mr. Manager, soon from Ms. Archer on some ideas, but the long and the short is that the Resort Advisory Commission has come together and thinks that we can enhance Atlantic Avenue, but maybe not to the tune of $48 million, that's to be determined, but they're all pretty much, I think, on the same page, that we don't put all $48 million into one area, but we, we look at it in enhancing Atlantic Avenue. That's.
So, Mr. Mayor, and members of council here, from the direction y'all gave us when Emily briefed you all, y'all basically told us, come back with options, tiers, right? Option of what it would look like to do the whole stretch at 48, and then multiple tiers to show at different price points what could be accomplished. Staff has been working with our consultant to provide that information to you all. Probably this week or next week, we're planning to give you all a document for you all to consider that, and then from there, work to give you all a brief and then garner some direction in terms of where you want us to go on that.
Okay, anybody else? Jennifer, and then Cash. Oh, I'm sorry.
And then a second thing, the same, the Resort Advisory Commission is also taking up transit within the resort. Last year, we had Freebie, we stopped the Freebie program and around Halloween, and so there's no Freebie point-to-point transportation, which is what Freebie provided in the resort. It's expensive. We do have a new proposal from Freebie that, I don't know if you all, if it was sent to all council members or not, but Resort Advisory Commission is concerned about transportation within the resort as, for, not only for tourists, but also for employees, and so they also, they want us, council, to revisit where we are with resort transit.
Okay, thank you.
Well, last thing on that, Mayor. We did get that report, I think, late last week. We do plan to include it to council, probably in this package.
Okay, great. Jennifer and Cash.
Thank you, Mayor. So two things. One, for active transportation, I do wanna shout out Walter Camp. He did step down as the Chair of Active Transportation as he's taken on more roles and obligations across the city, so he's been, as we all know, an advocate and a huge vocal supporter for the Virginia Beach Trail. So I do wanna thank him for his service and leadership on that committee, and then to commend the current Vice Chair, Brian Hickman, for stepping up as Chair. So he'll be the Chair for ATAC for the foreseeable future. And then speaking of all the boards and commissions reviewing the ordinances that we'll be voting on Tuesday, I do wanna seek just y'all's thoughts on clarifying some of the language as it pertains to student members, because there's, the intention, I believe, of this was from our council retreat where the council members wanted to step off as voting members from these boards and commissions, so we don't affect quorum and all of that, and we function only as liaisons. But then we also have student participation, and I was under the assumption that all student members were, or student appointees were members of the boards, but different boards have different rules. And so, for example, the Green Ribbon Committee has two high school students as voting members. The ITA Committee has two high school students as non-voting members, and then the ATAC Committee is asking to have two student members that are not voting members. And so I wanted to get your, have a conversation about that before we vote to clean up the language, to discuss the role of students on these boards. Do we want continuity across all the boards? They're either voting or not voting. Do we leave it up to each of these individual boards to determine how they want that participation? Because it affects quorum, so some are doing it, some aren't, and we're about to vote on it next week, so I don't know if y'all have any thoughts about that.
You know, I'm just uncomfortable with students being voting members. If we're gonna have up there, it should be uniform, Josh.
I have, I guess a question first, the attorney. Is there being less than the age of majority on a board or a commission, is there, is there any, is there anything in terms of the binding nature? I mean, obviously it's not contract or whatever, but do you have to be 18 to vote on a commissioner?
We need to.
Well, I, I will be interested to hear what Rod's answer to that question is.
That's why I don't.
That's why I looked at him. I don't think there's, I, I don't know of any limitation on the, the ability to participate. If council calls them a voting member, I think they have the authority to vote.
That's right, and Councilmember Rouse is right. There are different standards on different boards. Human Rights Commission has had student members who are voting members for more than a decade. When we add student members, I seek the input of the council liaisons. Do you wanna be voting? Do you wanna be non-voting? Do you want them to be part of the forum? The ATAC proposal is a little different in that the students would not be members, they would be designated as participants, but they wouldn't be members at all. And that means they wouldn't vote, but it also means, for example, that the two students could meet with one or two other members, and that would not be a gathering of three members of the public body for which we would need to provide public notice and give three, do that three days in advance and arrange for a location where the students and the adults could be, where also the public could be, and those things.
Just as a follow-up, and thank you for the answer, I just, I mean, I think of all the things that can happen in a student's life, like, you know, vacations or college visits or, you know, anything like that, and, you know, you wouldn't want that obviously to impact the ability of a board or a commission to meet, but at the same time, you know, I think I kinda learned this in a different way recently, whatever we decide, especially if we have students who are already voting members, we wanna make sure that we're, how, we value their participation, and by, by taking something away, I think we've gotta be really careful about that, because I, I don't, I don't want that to be misconstrued as we don't, we don't value your, your participation.
Okay, can I ask Amanda Barnes if you could comment, because she's the one that has to live with this outcome.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. So I have a concern specifically about the ATAC membership, how removing the students as members. The Boards and Commissions Committee that met for over two-plus years worked really hard and said that they felt like it would bring a lot of value to the board to have students as members. Whether they're voting or non-voting, that's, we're okay with that, we track that, but to, to limit them to a designee of council, I think it takes away their voice a bit, if you will, the value added. ATAC especially, I've read their minutes, it looks like, and it seems like those student members are very much involved in that committee. The other thing I will say is, a lot of these students are participating because they have higher aspirations, whether it, going to college or, and, and being a member of a board, having a letter from the mayor saying you've been appointed as a member, it, I'm sure it can go a long way on their college applications. Well, what I am concerned about is, we're creating a new definition for these students as a designee, and it's going to create a little bit of tracking issue, if you will, for my office, and we wanna make sure that we are maintaining and keeping the records as correct and accurate as we possibly can. Those are my only thoughts, and I appreciate you all taking that into consideration.
Oh, thank you, Jennifer.
So could it be that this, I mean, I don't wanna make this formal call, I'm just trying to think it through. Leave the membership title for ATAC, but clarify that they're non-voting, because it seems as if that's what it's trying to say here, that these are high school participants that don't vote, but that they can still have the member title?
I think they're already non-voting. I'll have to go back and look.
Yeah, so then this way, there's not a different category, it's just either the board can determine if they.
I hear you, I'll make that change.
Okay, if y'all are.
Good.
Okay, and then, all right, well, thank you for that. And then finally, so as y'all are aware, there have been some listening sessions for Districts 4, 7, and 10 for community engagement, to try to increase community engagement from some of the districts that aren't as active for all sorts of reasons. And so for District 10, there is a listening session on Thursday, March 20th, from 6:30 to 7:30 PM. It's at the Bow Creek Recreational Center, and so I'll also share this to my social media, but wanted to share it here as well for the Neighborhood Ambassador Program. media, but wanted to share it here as well for the Neighborhood Ambassador Program to hear about what are some of the barriers to participating with local government? What are some of the things that make it hard to reach out to or share concerns with local government? Please communicate what you can. If you can't attend, you can reach out. I'll put some information on my social platform, or you can reach out to speakup@vbgov.com to share your input, so this way, we know how we can better serve our residents, and thank you, everybody.
Okay, thanks so much. Anybody else?
Yes.
Okay, Cash, and then Rosemary, and then Amelia.
Yeah, so, just that note that Councilwoman Ross was saying, we've got Neighborhood Ambassador Programs, and so, District 7, we have ours coming up this Saturday, and engagement is important. I hope we've got several residents or more listening, District 7. I've asked them to tune in, but if not, this is why this is important, listening sessions. So, we're going to have a listening session at Faithway Community Fellowship, which is in the Level Green area. We've been doing a lot of work in Level Green, and so, we're excited about the participation. So, again, District 7 is having a listening session, it's Level Green, it's in the U, in the church's Faithway Community Fellowship, which we're good friends with the pastor there, and so, that's going to take place March 15, this Saturday, from 9:30 to 10:30. Share it on your social media. If you're watching me now, share it now. Well, I will post it, it's on my website, it's on my face, social media, Facebook, and they're listening now, and you're listening. You share it, you share it, you share it, you share it, and that's what happens, listening.
Thank you, thank you. Rosemary and Amelia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of things, Jennifer, I'm glad you brought up the student membership, because RAC also is interested in having some student participation as well. Mark, if you can put that on your to-do list, the RAC would be interested, and I think it would be non-voting, because part of, a lot of it's the experience, but, and their voices are heard, so I think that would be a really good thing, and then you always run into the problems of attendance, and you also make sure you look at what time these groups meet. If they meet early in the day, they may have trouble attending because of, they're in classes, but, and I just also wanted to say something with what Worth talked about with the, with the Freebie. I, I think we need to find another alternative, it's really missed, but free doesn't have to be free. I think one of the problems that we had with Freebie, it was free for the writers, but it wasn't free for us, so I think it needs to be some kind of a cost. People, I don't mind, I don't think, mind paying a nominal amount to be able to get the service of that, so hopefully, we can do that, probably, probably should have done this earlier, because the season is coming, but anyway, I'd like to support what he was saying there. And the other thing I wanted to mention was on the Atlantic Avenue, if we go this route of enhancing the whole 40 blocks, I think it'd be a good idea to have like a, a small advisory task force to look at what can be done. Do we, do we place a sidewalk? Do we change, can we put some fun lighting in? Can we planters? Just people that are on the ground, that they live it every day, we could put, I'm not talking about a gigantic task force, but a small task force from the Atlantic Avenue Association, and the RAC, and the hotels, and some of these, pull these people together, so, you know, that's my suggestion.
That's a good idea. Amelia.
Okay, in reference to the Freebie, I would like to be in on that conversation as well as the Commissioner for the HRT, so we can work together and see what's best, because as you mentioned, it's not free. A lot of people think it is, we've got to look at that part and how well we work with the Hampton Roads Transit. Second thing, Aragona Civic League, I attended yesterday, and it went well, and I was very pleased to see that they have been putting a few dollars together to give for the officers who lost their lives, so as of yesterday, they have $353, and they continue to be able to give to the family, to see that the Civic League, even though it didn't happen in their area, realized we are all, you know, one community, so that's from the Aragona Civic League yesterday. And then the third thing about the Neighborhood Ambassador Program is great, I'm pleased to say District 4 was well represented when they came in, and one of the reasons is, we already have, in District 4, the Western Bayside Community United, so we have a group that already meets looking at those, so once the neighborhood program came in and they were called for their ambassadors, they were ready to go. So, I wish District 7 and District 10, good luck, if you all have yours.
I forgot one thing. One quick thing, as you know, the design team for Ruby Park has been having a lot of meetings, and I did attend one of them last week, and they have, they have met with 10,000 people across the city so far, including all the high schools, and so, they are getting huge amount of buy-in and excitement, and a lot of comments from the community. This is definitely a people's park that's being talked about, so thank you.
Hey, Huck.
So, I had the pleasure of going to the joint under Human Services, the joint, I'll say this properly, Social Services Board and Community Services Board, and there's a lot of inner workings there together, so it's hard to keep the two quite separated, but some phenomenal work. Dr. Joyce Harvey is the Chair of the CSB Board, and Ms. Helena Gordine Thorpe is the Chair of the Social Services Board, but the work that they've done as a team under Director Smith, and specifically Deputy Director Angie Hicks and Deputy Director Charlene Collins, respectively, just, just a couple of things, they've done, under the, under the CSB side, is they've done 190 training citizen sessions for 10,000 citizens, so I thought that was pretty good. They've done 90, almost 100 community events, or almost 17,000 of our citizens, which was pretty good, and then, like everybody, they're trying to buy a vehicle. I did tell her that the timeline on the vehicle coming in was probably a little short. They said it was six to eight months. I said, "Yeah, you better figure an eight to a year on that," but it's for, it's a grant, they got almost, almost a million dollars, and it's to purchase and operate a mobile health vehicle for primary care and substance abuse treatment to go to where the needs are, so I thought that was, I thought that was excellent. Councilwoman Ross and myself had gone on a tour last year, and they have the, they have the, the unit where they put a child in a play area, and they put a parent in there with them, and then they have an earpiece in, and a counselor is helping the parent work through issues, and that's, now they have two of them on board, and it's only on the, in the mid-Atlantic region, the only other area that has one is KD, King's Daughter, so pretty phenomenal work that they're doing. And then I thought, one last stat, you didn't give me a room here, is for the Social Services Board, they have a, a job fair, basically, every month, where they do it in small sessions, but they have over a 50% rate of getting folks that are in their programs' jobs, but that was pretty astounding, 50%. So, just, just wanted to say, the team, those two, that one huge team, I think it's our largest team, right, and they're adding the juvenile and domestic courts as well underneath them, so a really large program that does some just outstanding work, so just wanted to say thanks for all they're doing.
Okay, Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, I don't know about the rest of you, but I know I've been getting a lot of calls lately about potholes, especially given the cold weather and the snow and the kind of irregular weather that we've had. I'm sure that it's a more prevalent problem this year than it's been in the past, but we've got major thoroughfares like Independence Boulevard and Virginia Beach Boulevard. I know, I almost lost a filling driving down Cleveland Street yesterday, so...
Cleveland Street.
Yeah, so I, and I know those are, a lot of those roads, we kind of wait for because they're in the queue for, you know, resurfacing and all of that, but I don't know what is being done, or if there's increased efforts in, in view of the weather that we had, and I know that takes time, effort, manpower, all of that.
I think if you see them, it's, so the city got over 700 miles of roadways, right? You know, we don't got enough staff to traverse every last one of them and figure it out, so if you see something, or if somebody reaches out to you, send, feel free to send them to my office, you know, they can reach out to Public Works directly, but if you send them to my office, we'll make sure we get it to the Public Works team, and they'll send somebody out, usually, pretty much in a 24, 48-hour period to get a address.
Yeah, they're really good.
Yep.
Is there an app for that?
There is an app.
There is an app, but I don't have it off the top of my head right now, but I'll make sure I get that information to you all, you know.
Important, this week, got an opportunity to participate in Read Across America with the kids, and kind of care, I read to the kids, and I tell you, it was just amazing to promote literacy. This is excellent for us as leaders to get involved in something like this, and so, I want to champion kind of care, and their amazing team and staff, and just the kids being engaging, so Read Across America, special shout-out to them. Thank you.
Great work.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. I forgot to add, I've got some happy and sad news. It's very happy, actually, my assistant, that you all know, Mr. Ben Green, who's here with us in the audience, advised me about a week or so ago that he has been appointed as a Regional Outreach Representative for Senator Mark R. Warner, and that's happy for him, sad for me, and for you all and my constituents, that he will no longer be with me. We do have a transition planned, but I can't thank him enough for what he's done for me and for my constituents. We'll miss him, but he has a great future, is a great person. He'll be a rising junior at, at Old Dominion in the fall, so he's still in college, but Senator Warner's office sees a good person. I call it a lateral move from Worth to Warner, but just kidding, Senator Warner.
Can I say also, he just celebrated a birthday, we're happy for him for that.
Happy birthday.
And it's definitely a lateral move, because he was my operations guy for the last, for the last election, so Worth and I, and thanks for, Worth, for sharing with me, but heck of an accolade, voting for Robert.
Best of all. Okay, let's move on. The chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section 2.237-11A Code of Virginia as amended for the following purposes, and that would be personal matters, discussions, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disappointing, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body pursuant to Section 2.237-11A1, and that's council boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees who have a motion.
So moved.
Second. Okay.
Councilor Verlucy, I have to say, Councilor Cummings.
Aye.
Councilor Henley.
Aye.
Councilor Huckison.
Aye.
Councilor Jackson Green.
Aye.
Councilor Vermic.
Aye.
Councilor Ross Hannah.
Aye.
Councilor Rouse.
Aye.
Councilor Tullin.
Aye.
Councilor Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Dyer.
Aye.
Ten to two.
Okay, we are recessed into court.[1413.48]
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes or the closed session?
No, move.
Second? Any second? Okay.
Third.
Councilor Cummings.
Aye.
Councilor Henley.
Aye.
Councilor Hutchinson.
Aye.
Councilor Jackson Green.
Aye.
Councilor Ross Hannah.
Aye.
Councilor Rouse.
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, okay.
Really?
Aye.
Okay, my friends, we are adjourned. See you tomorrow.